Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of May 8, 2018 at 6:30. We have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Please join -- do we have any ministers that would like to say an invocation for us this evening?
Yep.
Sir, would you come up? And if you could give us your name, sir.
Reverend John Clark.
Nice to meet you, sir. Continue.
Okay, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to meet, to discuss the matters of this city. Be with those that are here to discuss that their heart may be in the best interest of all who live and enjoy this great area. Be with us. We have wisdom to make the decisions that would do justice to this town and to you. Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no approval of minutes this evening, so next item is item five, Special Recognizations and Presentations.
Yes, sir. Representatives from the city's consultant, Kane &amp; Associates, will present a proposed restructure of the comprehensive plan with new policies that reflect the vision document adopted in January 2018. The proposed plan is structured into themes: downtown, waterfront, and gateways. So with that, Brad, I think you've got an intro and then to -- yes, sir.
Counsel, tonight you're going to hear two presentations, actually, one from our consultant and one from me later on in your agenda. They are related to the comprehensive plan, but they are very distinct. So if there's anyone in the member of the public that have submitted any comment cards on any one particular item, I just want the public to understand that these are two distinct items. The first one you hear tonight is, again, as the city manager already mentioned, is a presentation by our consultant that is going to give you an outline of what we believe will be a good new structure of our comprehensive plan. And so we're really just trying to get your feedback and it's a "what do you think?" kind of presentation, basically. It is not necessary for any action on it, we're just really looking for your input. The second item that I'll present to you later this evening has to do with changes to the comprehensive plan as it currently is written in order to meet statutory requirements as far as our evaluation appraisal review. And if you remember, there's a major part of that that has to do with sea level rise, storm surge, and as a result of hurricanes and things of that nature. So that's a much different item. That will require an action from you to transmit that year report and those amendments that we believe are consistent with statutory requirements to the state for their review. Both of these items, we'll come back to you again. This is not the last time you'll see this. You'll see it again later this summer, and we'll present parts of it again as well to you throughout the summer. We believe by August, late August or early September, we hope to have all of this rolled in together as one item for you to make action on. So with that, I'll turn it over to our consultant, Eliza Giuliano, with Kane &amp; Associates.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. I was here just recently presenting to you the results of our visioning process, but of course, to get that visioning process to be realized, as we showed in the Titusville Times of 2040, I believe it was, we have to actually implement it. And this is the first step in implementing that vision. We talked about the three keys to the vision, which are the downtown, the waterfront, and the gateways. And you'll see how those have been incorporated into our proposed reorganization of the comprehensive plan. So we talked in the last presentation that we gave to this body about what those potential next steps would be, and this is the first of those, which is aligning the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan with the vision. So I'm going to talk to you about the first three items tonight, which are that reorganization based on the visioning priorities, specifically as it relates to land use, transportation, and housing, which we've done as the initial test of this reorganization. And I'm going to talk to you about a potential reorganization of the future land use map, which is a hugely important document, part, obviously, of the future land use that tells property owners what the vision for properties throughout the city is. The next phase of this, which Brad mentioned will continue through the summer, is looking at the other elements of the comprehensive plan and reorganizing those and looking at them in view of the vision as well. But the future land use, transportation, and housing were the ones that were most aligned with the vision, and therefore, we felt it was important to address those first. So the proposed reorganization includes seven new organizing elements. As you recall, the current comprehensive plan is organized more around discipline, so essentially, transportation is an element, future land use is an element, more organized maybe around how city departments might be organized. But the purpose of the vision is to get everyone pulling in the same direction and to ensure that all of the departments and all the different groups are working together towards the vision for the different areas of the city. And you'll see the first three elements should be very familiar. They're downtown, waterfront district, and the gateways, which were the three keys to the vision. However, now that we're backing away and looking at the big picture, there are other elements that are important to address in the comprehensive plan as well. And those are issues that are citywide, neighborhoods, which are the base of the city, and then employment opportunities, which are, of course, a hugely important part of making the city successful. And then, in addition to that, there will be supporting elements that don't necessarily fit into the visioning categories, but that are equally important to the functioning of the city. So each of these elements is organized with one goal, a number of objectives, and each of those objectives has policies, a number of policies. I'm not going to go through all of that with you today. You have the document, and I'd certainly be willing to answer questions about any part of it, but I am going to go through the goal and the objectives. And that's actually similar to how the plan is organized now, except now the goals are based on those elements, future land use, transportation, and housing. And what we've essentially done is flipped that structure, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. The other thing that we've done is separate out strategies. Strategies are really checkbox items. Those are the items that staff is directed to complete, such as instituting a new code update or form-based code, instituting, doing a multimodal transportation plan. Those are a couple of the strategies that we talk about in this potential reorganization. And once those are completed, they're not in the plan anymore, versus the goals and objectives are things that carry through over time and are more at the level of principle. So the citywide goal, and let me also note, for the PowerPoint slides and the presentation purposes, these are abbreviated, the goals are a little bit longer in the actual text, so I didn't want to take up too much of your time, so we shortened them for this, plus so that everybody can read it. So in short, the citywide goal is to create a high quality of life for residents and as well as opportunities for residents and visitors. And that comes in a lot of different forms, in terms of housing, jobs, and recreational opportunities, and we'll deal with those all separately. And under that fall, citywide objectives that were articulated by the participants in the visioning process, such as retaining a small-town character, supporting the natural environment, and then more functional objectives like partnering with other agencies to get all of these things done. So this is a document that helps to explain that reorganization, and it doesn't really apply to the citywide element, but it applies to the remaining elements, the downtown, neighborhoods, waterfront, et cetera. And essentially, what we've done is we've taken the old elements that you're used to seeing, such as future land use, transportation, and housing, and addressed them throughout each of the new elements. So the downtown, overall downtown goal, will address what the state requires us to address, which is future land use, transportation, housing, and any other relevant objectives. But they're all focused on the character and the needs of downtown in particular. And so the transportation goals for the downtown may be different than the transportation goals for the gateways, and those may be different than the transportation goals for the neighborhoods. And you'll see how that falls out throughout the different elements. So when we talked about the vision, we talked about the need to enhance downtown and looked at a lot of different ways that might be accomplished, as well as feedback from the public using our community value survey and what they saw as being valuable and incorporating into the downtown. So taking that all into account, the downtown goal is focused on creating a memorable identity, a variety of activities, and bringing in more people to downtown, both through increased housing as well as increased access. And that gives us a set of objectives for all the different elements. Future land use focuses on redevelopment to bring in the population. And so the goal that we ended up with was about enhancing public access to the waterfront, as well as recreational opportunities, and we've heard again and again about the importance of environmental quality, of course, for the environment, but also to ensure that people continue to want to enjoy that waterfront, because it's an important resource for the city, both from an environmental standpoint and a financial standpoint. So in terms of the objectives, this one, we included a couple more objectives beyond future land use and housing in this draft, simply because we realized with the waterfront in particular how important coastal management was. So we didn't actually try to flesh out that objective, but we just wanted to recognize, we wanted to show you that in the waterfront in particular, coastal management is an issue in a way that it's not in some of the other elements. But of course, we still do have to deal with future land use, transportation, and housing. And one of our most important visioning elements for the waterfront area was this waterfront trail. So that really, that could fall under transportation or recreation open space. We felt it fit best under recreation and open space, so we felt it important to include that even in this early draft. And so those are the two orphans that don't fit. That doesn't mean we're not dealing with recreation and open space in the other chapters as well, but because it was such an important element of this particular district, we wanted to mention it in this draft. And of course, the third key is the gateways. And these are the major transportation corridors throughout the city, particularly those that have a lot of potential for redevelopment and mixed use. You see underutilized parking lots and underutilized properties that have the potential for infill, and so those create all sorts of opportunities. And they're an important aesthetic element of the city, because they're typically the first thing that you encounter when you're entering the city, usually by vehicle, and they dictate, to a large extent, the character of what people expect from the city. So we recognize that these gateways are critical for the city's image and that they're an important, of course, transportation function, and so that's equally important to this element. So the future land use element focuses on that visual identity, as well as the opportunity for infill and redevelopment to accommodate additional uses in those corridors. And the transportation objective in this section really focuses on the need to balance the local access with the function that these corridors serve in long-distance transportation. And we often find that corridors are one of the best opportunities to incorporate more multifamily housing, if there's an appropriate place in the city to incorporate that, it would either be downtown or these gateways. Now, one of the new elements, as we mentioned, that wasn't articulated in the vision, but that we realized was important, was the neighborhoods. And these function to, of course, provide the majority of the housing in the city and need to accommodate a variety of housing types. We also think it's important to emphasize that neighborhoods include not just the housing, but also neighborhood-serving uses, which could be parks, they could be retail, and that those should ideally be within walking distance, so that people can access them whether they have, whether they're unable to drive for some reason, because they're very young or very old, or otherwise not capable of using an automobile, or just for convenience, or to reach other goals around health or sustainability. So objectives within this section include, of course, dealing with housing in a variety of different formats, as well as safety and local mobility. What is the first thing you hear when people talk about their neighborhood streets? They want to make sure they're safe for their children or their grandchildren who are coming to visit, so that they know that their children are safe walking within their own neighborhood. And this is where that contrast comes in between, say, the corridors, which are focused more on regional mobility, versus the neighborhoods, where transportation really is focused on neighborhood-serving uses, and the need for that safe mobility for children, for instance. Employment opportunities, again, that's what keeps the city humming, is businesses that serve both service, both service industry-type businesses as well as office jobs. And we recognized as part of the vision that the Space Coast has this hugely dynamic industry opportunity that's continuing to grow, and that it's important to think about how the city of Titusville can make sure to ride that wave and be part of that success. So that includes identifying locations in the city where employment can be incorporated at a variety of scales, from the neighborhood baker all the way up to large-scale industrial businesses or corporate users, as well as ensuring people can get to work. So that means multimodal access, depending on where these businesses are located, how can we provide access to them that's appropriate for the folks that are going to be working at those facilities. So all of this is focused around, as we discussed last time, creating value, creating value for citizens, creating value for businesses, and of course, creating value for the city so that you can continue to provide high-quality services to citizens. So now I'm going to shift to talk about the future land use map strategy in particular. So there are some, frankly, pretty typical concerns around the future land use map that other cities and counties are also dealing with. So it's not at all out of the ordinary, as we're seeing a shift from future land use maps that have been on the books for a very long time, but aren't necessarily serving the same purpose they did when they were originally put together. One of the concerns with the existing map is too many categories that are similar to each other or very similar to the zoning. And they don't really provide counsel with any discretion when it comes to the zoning level, because those decisions have already been made at the future land use level. In some cases, it also gives the public an unclear picture of what is really permitted, particularly as it relates to how natural land is preserved within the city, and I'll get to that a little bit later. So the goals of the new map are to simplify the future land use map, so that it's distinguishable from the zoning map, so that it can better accommodate mixed uses, which is something that's important to the vision and to a lot of different revitalization efforts, to create a conservation overlay. And in addition, this isn't on the map, but what this means is that there will have to be locational criteria to provide some guidance on where the zoning should be within these now more generalized future land use categories. And of course, aligning to the vision, as we're doing with the document. So on the left, you'll see the existing future land use map, and on the right, the proposed. I know that's kind of hard to read, we're going to zoom in and look at it a little bit closer, and I believe you certainly have access to it through staff as well. So just as a for instance, I'm not going to go through every category, but there are a number of different existing future land use categories within the downtown area. And in this map, we've condensed them all into a downtown future land use. So commercial high also exists in other places throughout the city, but in downtown, we feel that that needs to align with the vision for downtown specifically. And then, within that downtown future land use, there will be guidance and multiple zones that you can choose from as counsel to be most appropriate to different portions of downtown. So overall, we went from 19 districts to eight districts with one overlay. And you can, just to zoom in a little bit, you can get some idea of how that simplification occurs, as well as making it more readable for the public to understand the big-picture vision for the city moving forward. So there's several categories that are specifically based on the vision, which are, this is starting to sound familiar, downtown, waterfront district, and gateway corridor, which specifically align to the vision goals. With the neighborhoods, we felt it was important to combine those, but to still keep two distinct categories, one of which is sort of general neighborhood category, and one is the neighborhood center, which is where you would have those uses that you might walk to, the neighborhood serving retail, maybe some little bit denser housing, that are still transitioning appropriately to the neighborhood scale. In line with the economic focus of the employment opportunities element, we have Research and Manufacturing District, which is primarily located on the southern end of the city near the airport. And that's really where the opportunity for a large-scale job creation of an industrial type that's not really compatible with residential or downtown uses would be appropriate. And again, these are aligned, these are largely aligned with the existing boundaries, but really just recombining some of those different uses into more broad categories. And finally, there's the public interest districts. So these are the civic district, which includes basically the public and semi-public lands, recreation and open space, and the conservation overlay. And I'm going to zoom in a little bit to talk about the conservation overlay. So we feel that this provides more transparency and clarity, both to counsel and to the public, about what's conserved now versus what may be conserved in the future and what's permitted. So for instance, if you can see, there's a green hatching on both these properties, one of which is in blue and one of which is in dark gray. The blue property is a civic land, so that's land that's owned by the city or by another public entity, and it has a conservation overlay. That means, by and large, it is conserved for the foreseeable future, because counsel controls the destiny of that land fully. On the other hand, across the street, and we haven't done due diligence on these properties in particular, but what we know is that the land across the street is not owned by the public. It's owned by a private entity, but it also has a conservation overlay. So what that means is they may have some development rights, and under the current map, we don't know if those are residential rights or commercial rights, but they, this conservation overlay doesn't necessarily mean that they don't have development rights. And right now, that's not, there's no distinction in the current map between those two eventualities. So we feel it's important to let the public know, these things are conserved forever, and these areas are, there's an overlay to let both the public and the private sector know that these areas may not be fully developable, but it's also important to let them know that parts of it may be. And that's so that people aren't surprised when they come to a meeting and see that there's development being proposed for these sites. So that's all I have for you this evening. I'd be more than happy to take any questions.
It seems like enough for the city. If you'll hold on one moment, I failed to ask the city clerk to read the rules on speaking. City clerk?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any items more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Are there any cards on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? It's a lot of materials all at once, but I understand that we've been going through a process on this, and this is the second or third, second time, I guess, you're here, and then you'll be back again after we develop some questions on this part, I guess. Vice Mayor, yes?
Thank you, sir. And man, thank you, by the way, that was in-depth, but I think clear, so I appreciate that. So what I'm taking away from this is that this is the nuts and the bolts of categorically where everything's going to fall. where we're, everything's going to fall, uh, and the format from which we'll build from. The, I, I guess, and to you or to staff, um, when it talks about the, the three keys to the vision, right, I, I guess just an implementation or value that that has in leveraging the categories devised, um, I, I'm wondering how valuable that nugget is for the implementation of this? And the reason I say that is as an example, whereas I believe all three of those things are important, I believe that our Commerce Park is like critically important. So, whereas it's delineated, and I see categorically it's placed in there, the key to the vision portion, if it's semantics, I'm not worried about semantics. If it is something that will drive decision-making later on, then I am concerned about it. And the reason for that is when I look at Melbourne, or I look at other places, I see that, you know, right now, as outlined as is for future land, we have this big chunk in the south side of town, very comfortable with that. But I just want to make sure that whatever our decision-making is, that categorically, that there is an emphasis to that section of this. So, that was my question, like, how much impact do the key visions as delineated override other things? I'm trying to think of that. Or is it just, it all works the same? Go ahead, yeah. Thank you.
Well, to answer your question.
Yeah.
In short, this document, if it's in its final version, when it comes back to you later this summer and it's adopted, the policies and strategies you see here are what will govern growth management in the city. So, I guess to address your question, as far as, for example, rezoning property, you'd get a petition for someone who wants to change their rights on a property. That would be guided based on what this document says. So, you, your decisions would be based, work within that parameters of this doc, of this document.
Mm-hmm. But, I, I'm sorry, let me try, because, and thank you for trying to clean that up, because that's messy. As an example, we have our strategic goals every year that we set as, right, as a council. Everything that we do is related to those goals, and everything that we read in policy correction action, all goes back to those goals. My concern is that if the Commerce isn't on there as one of these three things, that we don't, that all of a sudden becomes less valued as these other three. Are you following me? So, if that's a policy question, I'm comfortable with that.
Uh, and I think we recognize that, too, when we moved from the, the vision to the actual comprehensive plan.
I agree.
I think that would fall under the employment opportunities element, and we also thought that that was hugely important and thought it needed to be added.
Yeah, I, and I totally am in concurrence with that. I'm just making sure that this doesn't take away from that.
Right, so I think the comp plan is a controlling document, and it has that employment opportunities element. The vision is informing the comp plan, but it's not limited, the comp plan is not limited to only those items that were addressed in the vision.
I got you on that. The objectives as defined within the downtown residential or so-and-so on, I'm sure that we'll move forward with that and figure out what that's going to mean later on. Correct?
Uh, there is additional, in addition to what I presented, there are policies under each of those objectives that get into more detail.
Right.
Um, this is still in draft form, so there may be additional policies added, and we haven't gotten into, for instance, the, the specific densities permitted within those categories yet.
Yeah, and when we get, so at what point will we get to that?
We are going to continue working with consultant this summer, and we'd like to bring this back to, we were thinking maybe bring it back to you in pieces, so we're not showing you everything at one time, so you can absorb one part at a time.
Sure.
But we're, our goal is to have everything, final draft for you to accept, uh, at the end of the summer, so.
And, and just the, the feedback, whether it's now or later, but the, the capacity of residential, right? So, let's pretend that Titusville at its max, right, when we're hopping, uh, how many units were we able to achieve down there? So, and, and the only reason I have concern with that is when we look at, for years, I think, for decades, literally decades, we've been talking about building the downtown area for residential, residential, residential. And if you look at our CRA plan, it has this nice, big, beautiful building, right, and that I have, right, like, so, my concern is that in our future land use, when we talk about the capacity of what we really have, is something that we would have access to when measuring the policies that are put before us. So, I think that'll come back when, when you, yes, come back with that piece. And then, under the neighborhoods section, yeah, the, and again, maybe down the road, but is there a contingency for the law enforcement input on that under for, future land use? With the rationale, as an example, if we look at our community behind Isaac Campbell Park, we've got a railroad that runs right behind it, we have a nice, big wood line. So theoretically, if we have a new developer come in, they build a place, there are some things that I think that we would learn along the way to prevent maybe some security risks with our growth and development, so.
Our comp plan currently has policies in there, kind of encouraging us to adopt what's called SEP TED standards, and those are, uh, security, you know, urban design or, or development design standards that, uh, police departments have, have come up with.
Okay.
So, it's certainly something we could, we could, uh, make sure is carried over into this plan and, and fleshed out as an option for when properties are developed, such as the one, the example you gave, that they are built in such a way that, um, provides some, uh, security there on a property.
Yeah, as an example, we don't have a spot where we can have a car dump. You know what I mean? Something I would never think of, but during our development process from a future land use, I, I would value that, but I, from a part of this process, I don't know where to integrate that.
There's certain uses that are probably missing from our code, okay. That's something we could certainly look at, yeah.
Wetland conversation, conservation, thank you. And then, for, and this is the nuts and bolts of it, right? So, the value, I, I think, because it's easier for me to read, which means that it must be real easy, um, but in contrast, then, does this make zoning for the person coming in who says, "It's zoned this way, but on the FOU it's this way"? Because we're taking out the specificity, we're going from 19, and we're shrinking it a little less, but when they go to build, I think what they'll run into is zoning questions, and they'll say, "That guy could do it, but I can't." Ultimately, is it more service-friendly, or is it not?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We've, we've tried to see if there's some way to make, streamline some of the processes that we thought were, um, a conflict. We, we handle a lot of, uh, land use decisions that we have to bring before you, mainly because someone wants to rezone a property that is tied to only one particular land use. So, that's an issue. The Employment Center or the Research Manufacturing District that's being proposed by a consultant in that south area there, that area has several land use categories and a plethora of zoning districts. Combining them all into one generalized land use category really streamlined processes as far as approving different types of industrial manufacturing uses down there. So, yes, we did, that's part of the reason why we went this way.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Very good questions. Anybody else have any questions?
Can I? So, if I come to you and I want to build a piece of property in a specific area, so the old zoning is on it, but I don't like that zoning, would I go to you or to change that zoning? Do you have that discretion?
Oh, I, a rezoning would always come to you.
Okay.
Any petition to rezone a property would always come to the city council for approval. But the, the criteria, what we're, what's being suggested by the consultant is that we come up with locational criteria for those zoning districts within that land use.
Okay.
So, that, that's something we're going to flesh out and, and propose to you.
Does it, do you have any discretion in this?
As far as rezoning a piece of property?
Rezoning, or?
No.
No, it's still the same process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so bottom line is, we're still going through the same steps, but we're doing it in a more intelligent manner, or where people understand it better?
Yeah, that's, I mean, certainty is something that is, the development community would like to have, and right now, our, our comprehensive plan doesn't really provide that. So, we're trying to provide some assurances to the public that their properties will be protected, but also to those private property owners, that there is a, um, a process that everybody can understand.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
But you're certainly always available to us at any stage for questions that we might have individually, or?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so that's, they're always there for us. And I think you've done an outstanding job up, up to this point, and I'm sure you'll continue with it, so, that's great. Any other questions from anybody? I see none. We have to, uh, accept the proposed restructure. Need a, a motion?
I'd move to accept the, uh, proposed restructure of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
With new policies? You want to read the rest of that, or?
No. The new policies reflect the vision document adopted during January 2018.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a second. Uh, any further discussion? I'm seeing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Alternate member Michael Bobek has submitted his resignation verbally by telephone, effective 25 April 2018. His term expires on 31 January 2020. Currently, there are no other applications on file, and our recommendation is that you accept the resignation of alternate member Michael Bobek.
Do I have a motion, please?
I'd move to accept the resignation of alternate member Michael Bobek.
Second.
And, and we will write a letter, uh, accept it with regrets, thank him for his service. With that there, any other discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I hear none. Passes unanimously. Next, Mr. City Manager?
Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. Currently, there's one vacancy for a City of Titusville representative on this committee. The position was advertised on the city's website, bulletin boards, and, and on channel 498. Currently, there's one application on file for your consideration. Nell's Welkine has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this committee. Currently, there are no other applications on file for your consideration. Staff recommends that you appoint this citizen to the, the Space Coast Transportation Planning Advisory Board.
Okay, so I hear a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
You, you got to come here today.
I'll point, uh, Mr. Whitaker, um, to the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Next, sir?
Yes, sir. Accept the North Brevard Library District Board's semi-annual report as written.
Any discussion on that? Going to have a motion?
No.
Oh, somebody else, go ahead. Come on here.
For those of you who have not been in the library lately, uh, it is really looking nice.
Oh, great.
Um, they are, that's, it looks great. It looks great. So, now somebody else I have to make the motion.
Probably, I don't see, yeah, probably the feedback there, say, "What is a library?" At this point. Uh, okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the North Brevard Library District Board's semi-annual report.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing any? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public present, those of you who wish to speak, come up. First one, get up there, but anybody else sit down in the front seats there, so we can expedite it a little bit, if you want to speak to council at this point.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Bailey, and I live on Riverside Drive. And I am here with some other property owners in Titusville, wanting to know what the current situation is of 1735 Riverside Drive. I'd like to know where it stands right now, how long it's going to keep looking like the city dump, uh, if there's any current violations, uh, and if these, there are violations, are we doing anything about it? Who's all involved in it? It's on the waterfront, but it's piled up, and there are big chunks of concrete, there's gravel, there's holes. Every time we get this much rain, we get this much flooding, and it doesn't seem that anybody's making any headway with it. So, like Harry Truman said, "Where's the buck stop? What are we doing about it? Can you tell us what we can do to get this taken care of? Do you have any intentions for this property? And if so, what are they? And when do you see something happening?"
Are you through, ma'am?
Maybe.
You got, you got it, okay.
Richard. Of course, I'm going to defer to staff, because there are permits on that property to extend water pipes. There's permitting processes through St. John's, Army Corps of Engineers. So, I cannot give you the latest, because I am not in that department, but certainly staff can either tell you what they know now or come back to you with a report on what is going on with the permits in the building. There was code action on that property, uh, but I, I don't know if staff here is knowledgeable on that site that can address that, or if we're going to have to defer as far as the building permits go. And I, I assume you're talking about the, the river piece behind the old Taco, behind Quomps?
Yeah, it's that piece of property between the condos and the old Howard Johnson's that's fenced in. It's that piece on the water.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head. If you would contact me, I'd be happy to research it and let you know tomorrow, but I can't tell you today.
Okay, and who are you?
Oh, I will be happy to give you my name and contact information.
I would appreciate that, because I pounded up and down that street, giving people flyers saying, you know, "Are you sick and tired of looking at this?" Because what these people said before me is all of this great stuff about waterway and, and having a nice place to live, and it's not a nice place for me to live, to have to have people come to my house and look at a property that is rat-infested and is, the weeds are this high. And I've called different departments, and they're probably sick of hearing from me, but I'm not going to quit. So, I would appreciate it very much if I could get some answers on, um, what's going on with it, and if the city council has the ability to do something besides just find the guy.
Ms. Bisaka can give you all of that information.
Okay.
I'm sure she'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, and if it's not done to my satisfaction, you'll be seeing me here a lot. Right, Matt?
Okay. Anyone else?
Sir, I have a question. Is this the attorney?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
If you will, ma'am, one second.
And, and city attorney, I, I think I'm familiar with the backstory to this. Would it be okay, could you just kind of give us a, where we started, where we're at, and kind of what, what is happening, so, and that way, if there's a question about the process on where we're at, that would probably be helpful.
Sure. Big picture?
Yeah.
I think what's going on is, uh, there's a stormwater pipe there, that there's a permit in the city to extend that stormwater pipe out to the water, as part of the development activity that is happening on that site. There's also permits with St. John's, an application with Army Corps of Engineer and the City of Titusville to, uh, develop that lot. My understanding is the material there is to be used as the fill material to fill that lot under the permits. The status of the permit, I cannot tell you that. I know that those permits were applied for. I do not know the status of the Army Corps permit. That's something that Ms. Bisaka will find out through, that goes to the Building Department, our Flood Plan Administrator, Gary. So, we'll find out the latest information, provide you an update, as well as the citizens who have requested it. But those are the permits currently on the property. One, to fill the property, the material on site is purportedly to be utilized, and has been looked at by St. John's, to utilize that as the fill material, uh, and to extend the stormwater pipe that is currently there out to the water.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I see none. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Tumi. I'm a resident of Titusville. I live here on, on Golf View Drive. And, uh, my dilemma is, is that I would like to open a retail plant establishment in Titusville. I'm having some zoning issues. Initially, when I tried to, um, to, to, to apply for the permits, uh, the, the tax certificates and, and all of these things, I inquired by phone and in person whether or not this property was accessible to me to open up a retail plant establishment. I was told that, yes, it was, that, um, that I had just had to fill out some paperwork, I had to first get state license and this license, and a Department of Agriculture certificate, and all of these things, and to bring those, uh, papers with me to get my City of Titusville tax certificate. tax certificate. Once I did that and paid my fee to the city, within minutes, I get a phone call telling me that my application had been denied. My landlord has been to the city on my behalf to help me in this. A nursery had already been on that property at one time. Twigs and Nurseries Berry, Twigs and Berry Nursery had already been there. There were some exceptions given to him, but those exceptions are not being offered or extended to me, and I am pleading with you to offer me those extensions so that I can put in a retail plant establishment in this area. I don't need a building. Electric is there, water is there, there is accessible restrooms there, and there's adequate parking there. So I would like somehow for the code to be tweaked or somehow to get a special exemption to allow me to open my business on State Road 50. It's State Road, it's 300 State Road 50, and really, had I not gone and inquired to whether or not I was allowed to be there, I would not have signed a loan the next day. So I have put myself in a financial precarious position by also getting a loan on the say-so that this was possible for me.
I'm going to let staff.
Absolutely.
Address it for you. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bisaka?
This is what I know. Ms. Tooming came to the city, and when I spoke with her, she wanted to open a plant nursery, which under our code requires that it be in an M1 zoning category. The property that she's talking about has two zonings on it. The back half is M1, the front half is community commercial. When I spoke with her landlord, I suggested that Ms. Tooming could get, put the nursery under our current code on the M1, and the landlord said, there's not room on that property, and I want to put the commercial, on the commercial property. Well, unfortunately, our code does not permit that right now. Now, there are several moving parts here. Ms. Tooming provided us with a copy of her state, which, her state approval through the Department of Ag, which says that there are two options. She can be a plant nursery, which means that she grows, or she can be a, what is the term? I forget the term right now, but it'll come to me.
Stock nursery.
Thank you. A stock nursery, which means that she doesn't grow it, she just takes the materials and puts them on site. A stock nursery would fall under a retail. However, aside from that, to my knowledge, there are no businesses in the city of Titusville that don't have a building. The code requires that all outdoor display, which this could be considered and would be, must be within a certain distance of a building. In addition to that, once you invite someone onto the commercial establishment, there's bathroom facilities that are required, there's parking required, there might be stormwater required. There's a lot of requirements. Now, what Ms. Tooming is asking, I believe, is for advisability to see if we can figure out how to change plant nursery, which I don't know what, how this will work, because there's a difference between growing plants on site and just transporting them there and then selling them, like Ace Hardware does. In addition to that, there is the possibility to be a mobile vendor. That doesn't require a building, but it does require that she's only open five days a week, and that she has to take everything off of the facility at night. What Ms. Tooming wants to do is, I've been told by, is to put up a 10 by 10 pop-up tent, use the power from a power pole that's on the building, that's on this property, and the water would actually come from the neighboring property. So there are lots of issues. We're happy to work with Ms. Tooming, but I'm not sure that there's going to be a lot of options without putting some kind of structure up, without putting a unity of title over the property so that there is guaranteed access to all of these facilities that you have when you have a commercial business. But we'd be delighted if the council would like us to assist her, we'd be delighted to do so. I just don't know if she's going to be totally satisfied at the end.
I think we have to start somewhere, though, and see what we can do for this lady. So I would certainly recommend that. Have any lights? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to kind of look at this maybe a little differently. So as an example, if the lease agreement between her and her lease or said that her lease was inclusive of that property extended to the building with use of bathrooms and, you know, like, so for all the things in the code, let's say you've got to have this as part of the building. If her current lease agreement was inclusive of access to that building and that space...
My landlord has offered that. And that may be possible, but let me tell you that right now, we're dealing with an issue where a landlord changed their mind.
Right.
And now they've come to the city and said, you make that stop.
Sure.
And we said, we can't. So now, we are caught between a landlord, so if you have access, you have to do an easement.
Right.
We don't do bathroom easements.
Right.
So that's where the issue is. If somebody changes their mind, then do we shut down an operating business? Because they've sold it, because the gentleman died, because he's changed his mind, because his insurance company's liability no longer allows it? There's lots of reasons.
Is there an option for me to put a port-alet out there? Is that allowable?
No, there's not.
Because if I were mobile, then there would be port-alets out there.
If there was, if you were mobile, you wouldn't need that because you would, as a mobile vendor, you do not have to do that. You can set up your property every day, you can be there five days a week, and you can operate there, but you have to remove everything at night.
I guess where I'm at, my example is a business person.
Under, as a plant nursery, we could repair, and that any sales would be accessory to that.
That's fair.
So we would have to look and see if we could fit that as an accessory use into his repair business. Where if he had a commercial business, and it was commercially zoned, then it would be retail, and we wouldn't be having these discussions.
Totally fair. Thank you for just looking at it seventeen different ways, ma'am.
Member Diesel.
Okay. I'm all for you two talking and seeing what can be done, but I also feel that I'm concerned about the can of worms we may be opening up here, no pun intended. We just, one meeting ago, we're very stringent about, let's talk about code enforcement, and let's make sure we get this done and that done, and now we're getting a little bit loose about perhaps not having a building and not having restrooms and all those things. I hope it works, but I think we've got to be careful about how loose we get, because who's next?
Anyone else? Ma'am, I'm sure you, oh, I'm sorry.
Is that true? Are you looking just to have a 10 by 10 tent?
No. The tent essentially is just for me to get out of the sun.
Okay.
The plants belong out in the sun, but I don't belong out in the sun for 10 hours a day. So eventually, all it is, is for me to be out of the elements. And I actually, I don't think it's going to be a 10 by 10. That's just a number that's been floating around.
Okay.
It can be a large umbrella for all I care, as long as I'm not sitting under 108 degrees.
So you're planning to leave the plants there overnight?
That was the intention, yes.
Would there be any safety concerns with people stealing, like?
No, there's already a fence there. So when the other nursery was there, the city actually helped them fence in the area.
Okay.
So the fence was already put there prior to the other nursery being there. So the other nursery was allocated to use the restrooms that are in the property that's already there. There was electric put there for this gentleman. A fence was put up for this gentleman. There was extra parking put in for this gentleman, and I didn't see a problem with me just kind of refilling those shoes, because everything has already been put there for this gentleman.
So, and this might be a question for you, Peggy. So is the fence, do you know, is it around M1 and the commercial?
Yes.
Both zones?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, okay, so it's falling under both.
Yeah, and encompasses both lots.
Okay. All right. Hopefully, we'll be able to try to figure out something.
Okay.
Member Nelson?
So Peggy, if this, the guy at, what is it, this business says, I want to go over to the CC side and have a nursery and sell plants out of my business, would that be acceptable?
He can sell plants in CC.
Right.
But in order for us to know that this was all one business, he would have to have a site plan, we have to make sure that there's adequate parking, we have to make sure that all of those things, and that is additional step. It would have to be a unity of title. We would have to look at, I mean, there's a lot to this. It would be, this isn't just go out there and put your plants down.
Okay.
Because we have to ensure that there's adequate parking, that there's access, that there's all of those things that you do when you have a business.
Yeah. Parking would be tight, I would think.
And that would have to all be done. Now, it's possible that there's adequate parking on the M1 site, but we don't know that, because nobody has said to us, we want to put this on the M1.
Okay.
They've said, we want to put it on the community commercial, which is totally a vacant lot.
Okay. How did the other guy get away with the Twigs and Berries?
I was not here, and I cannot tell you. But I can tell you that it is not currently consistent with the code.
Okay.
And I can also tell you that plant nursery is not a change to the code. We, that is, so.
So not, but as far as plants go, I don't want Depot and natives, and some other more unusual plants. Some of those things I can only get in what are called plugs. So they're three-inch plants in a half-inch pot. It's literally the size of a nickel and two and a half inches deep. That's it. The plant itself could fit in the palm of your hand. So what happens is that these propagation nurseries, which I'm not, which are farms, I'm not a farm, sell these small little plants, and you put them in one-gallon pots, and you wait a couple of weeks until it's retail-ready. So this is how I'm getting kind of thrown into this as being a growing nursery, and I don't know how to get out of that, but I still think that I should be able to offer some things to our citizens that are beyond Walmart and Home Depot, to be honest with you.
Great.
You have more? Ms. Bisaka will contact her, and I'm sure she'll do her best for it. She's the person who is in charge of all of that.
Okay. But I wanted to explain it so that you all kind of understand.
I think you've done an extensive job of explaining.
Between nursery and farm.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Tom Coy from Titusville, Florida. I'm here to talk about the city and roads in Titusville. On the website today, city of Titusville, it has a plan that the city council in 2000 planned on fully funding the city streets for repaving from the local option gasoline tax. Some of these streets that were listed is Country Club, Knox McCray, Park Avenue, Deleon. I drive the streets every day like probably most of you guys do. Knox McCray, Harrison, Barna, Royal, Country Club, and they're in dire need of repair. And I'd like to find out what the city's vision is to address this issue. Also, in this website, or in the present, presentation on the website, it says they plan to use money from the local option gas tax. In 2018, the city received over a million dollars in local option gas tax, but this year, they have $314,000 allotted for city roads and streets. So the money has gone into the budget, but I can't tell you where it's gone after that. It goes into the general fund, I guess. I don't know where it goes. But the money is a million dollar, it comes in from local option gas tax, but this year, 2018, they have $294,000 allotted. Talking to the people at Public Works, it takes about $100,000 to do one mile of road. So I don't know where we're at with the roads. I have, my street where I live is in dire need of repair, and I can't get them to come repair it. They do what they call a cold patch versus a hot patch. A cold patch is just put some asphalt in this hole, stomp on it a little bit, and that's it. It's a temporary repair. And as cars drive on it, it pushes out these patches that they repair, then they'll come back and patch it again. And after a while, it's just really a nuisance and hazard, if you will, to drive on these roads the way they are. I'm asking the city, if they can't repair the, repave the roads, let's do proper repairs. Let's do hot patches, cut the section out, repave it, and have a steamroller and rollover. I think they would last a lot longer, in my opinion.
I think we do those presently.
Well, they need to do it in my street, and they need to do it in a lot of areas.
They do it on your street, but I've seen several of them.
You know, I don't know what the plan is for the city of Titusville, but the local option gas tax, it's pretty clear in the Florida statutes, it's to be used for transportation expenditures. Florida statute 336.025 addresses the local option gas tax. I'm not an attorney, I don't plan to be one, or want to pretend to be one.
Don't play one on television either.
But from the best of my ability, there was clear legislative intent for the local option gas tax for transportation expenditures, and again, the city's received over a million dollars, and they got $294,000 for roads.
A gentleman over there may be able to answer some of your questions. Mr. Cook?
Sure. The gas tax does go to transportation. What it goes to is the street maintenance department. Twenty-one employees to fuel the equipment we use, the repair facility materials, right close to seven to eight hundred thousand this year in budget. It also goes to fund street lighting, which is nearly $600,000, which is statutory expense, and to our capital program, so, which currently, not just for road repaving, but for sidewalks, any transportation needs. So all that million dollars is eaten up, and then some general fund contribution to fund roadways, the maintenance of a roadway.
And in addition, counsel, as you are aware, we do six miles of roads a year. That's our goal, and I believe the last two years, we've been able to exceed that goal.
And over what period does that do the?
Thirty. Yeah.
Yeah, I was at the city, the Public Works Department this year, and she said, based on the money they have budgeted for 2018, they'll be lucky if they can do three. It's what the lady, there was an engineer that told me, not a clerk, it was an engineer.
Thirty years?
No, 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 three miles this year.
Oh.
The general fund amounts to about three miles, yes. We use numerous funding sources. This year, we'll have federal funds coming in for Hopkins. We also have CDBG money, another federal source comes into the target areas, and we still, we will exceed 6.6 miles this year.
So that six miles is an average. I know from the fact that we've done 18 in one year when the asphalt was cheaper and so forth and so on, so I imagine it's a thing that averages out, but it's not every year that we do exactly the same amount.
Something I had to address. So thank you. And my first time speaking, do I need three cards to talk about three different subjects? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll be back. Thank you.
All right.
Sir, if you could give Mr. Cook your address, we could probably figure out when your street is due to be repaved, and if you do have some hot, cold patches.
I could talk to him probably about the other issues also.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Who's next, please?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm here to discuss an issue that I haven't been able to meet with the city manager and appropriate persons, because they do not wish to meet with me. So I bring this to council, and I bring this, I brought it to you today in the form of an email regarding another affidavit that I am preparing. So I'll read to you something from that affidavit, my intention to prepare another affidavit, and in this case, this has to do with what I've been talking about, in that it's some truth and justice regarding some issues of the city of Titusville. truth and justice regarding some issues of the City of Titusville. So in a similar manner, I am presenting, seeking your input and remarks as I prepare this affidavit, which I have a preliminary title as follows. It's a very long title, it's got four items on it, so it says, "Affidavit of misconduct by the City of Titusville." I know that's somewhat offensive. "Affidavit of misconduct by the City of Titus regarding Parkland area, the area of Parkland Estates, to implement and to execute the following. Number one, the design and construction of dams and to raise the 100-year floodplain above pre-development conditions as calculated by your engineer in anticipation of these dams, to misrepresent home values in this area and to flood private property." That's number one. Number two, and this is since 1984, "to artificially raise the 100-year floodplain above pre-development calculations, calculated by your city's consultant engineers by adoption of city's 100-year floodplain map, with the expectation to increase flood insurance premiums and to devalue homes." That's since 1985. And then, number three, is the misrepresentations by city to the public of city's artificially, I say artificially created, 100-year floodplain of Parkland Estates by city's 100-year floodplain map that was adopted in 1985, and by city's fictional, I use the word fictional, explanations of the elevations and plan view representation of the 100-year floodplain elevations of Parkland Estates as represented by the firm maps adopted in 1989 and adopted in 2014. Number four is the concealment of city by the above misconduct of city by ignoring, denying, misrepresenting, and cover-up of city's misconduct. So I'm asking you to contact me with your input and comments as I prepare this affidavit, and you can contact me by emails. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the general public, Mr. Johnson has been through this, I don't know how many years. We do answer him, we did, and it's gotten to the point that we've spent so much money and none of the organizations from the state, St. John's, FEMA, I can't even think of all of them at this point, agree with him. So it's not a matter of we're ignoring him, we just don't know what to tell him because we've given him all the answers we have, they've given him all the answers they have. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to speak about a couple of things. One is Patty Tooming. I've known her for about a dozen years, and she's absolutely brilliant on plants, on fertilizers, on growing stuff. If you had a Department of Agriculture, she should be in charge here. I mean, she's great, and she could give great advice and sell safe products. We live right by this river. You saw all the fish die. Some of it's because of algae bloom, which is because of pesticides that get into that river, okay? She has ways to prevent that. That's one thing. I would recommend you let her open her shop. And there used to be a plant guy there, right on 50. In fact, I think there were a couple of them, and they're gone. But I think she could survive and prosper and help everybody that wants to get plants in this city. That's one thing. Totally different subject, I drive down on Dairy, coming across, and they're building a sidewalk there on both sides of the street. I've never seen anybody walk there, but they're building, it looks like a half a million-dollar project. I don't know who decides on where the money's going, okay? There's a bicycle bridge going over Garden Street. I don't know who paid for that. Have anybody ridden a bike over that?
Yes, sir.
You have? Good. Is it hard? Is it tough? I've never seen anybody use it.
Yes, sir.
Meanwhile, you drive on Palm.
It's part of a much bigger system, sir.
I know it is, but you drive on Palm, you drive on Hopkins, you drive on Harrison. They're in terrible shape, terrible shape, but you can build a bridge over Garden for bicyclists. Makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I will tell you, sir, as I said, it's, no, that's right, it's not a question, sir. You can sit down and listen. I have something to say to you. It's not a question, however. You may sit down.
Thank you.
That is part of something that's called the Rails to Trails, which is a trail that presently goes up into Alusha County, and will go south of here all the way to Miami. Actually, someday, it's going to go from Maine to Miami. That bridge was done as part of that system, and the state paid for that. There are bikes going over it. I'll make a long story very short. There's another Rails to Trails, or yeah, Rails, goes from Titusville to St. Petersburg. We just opened that the other day, and it also goes over that bridge to get into downtown Titusville. Imagine if the bikes had to go over Garden Street all the time. It's a wonderful opportunity for our city. I didn't know how wonderful till I went over to Winter Garden, and you might want to go over and you'll see why that bridge is there. That Winter Garden is part of our system that will go from here to St. Petersburg, has been there for about ten years. And they said they get about 50,000 people a month on their trails because they're a trail town. And we are doing that. We opened that Welcome Center downtown, and the numbers are going up nicely. I haven't looked at them recently, but I know they're going up nicely. So it's not just one bridge for a few local bicycles. Thank you, sir.
We still have the problem with those streets.
We've dealt with that issue on the other one, yes, and I understand what you're saying, but we do have a system that we are trying to work, and if the gentleman didn't have the right work done on his thing, I do know that we do that hot, I've seen it around town, it's very effective, so hopefully they'll help him with that situation. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Kevin Beverly, 2624 Jeffwood Drive. My comments are regard to the article in the Florida Day, April 30th, about the ten things you don't know about Titusville, and the comments the following day that local radio personality Jim Phillips made on May 1st about Titusville employing a clown to work for the city with the fire department. With all due respect, your honor, council members, to quote Dr. Phil, "Is Titusville stuck on stupid?" I don't see, it also mentioned an article, Titusville's the only city in this county employing a clown to work for the fire department? If you're the only person doing something, either you're a super genius like Steve Jobs, or you can fill in the blank. Comments, questions?
No, sir.
The actual employee that dresses as a clown periodically, also dresses as Mr. Firefighter, and it's the pub employee, what we do is we go out and do public engagement, and that's her duty and responsibility. We go to schools, we go to public venues, and that's just part of the makeup that she wears at times.
Well, I think the first presenter about your comprehensive plan was talking about the city's image. I don't know if you listened to Jim Phillips, but his range is from St. Augustine to Fort Pierce, and pretty much Titusville was made a laughingstock, so.
Those type of radio announcers like to make that sort of comments and help people like you listen to them. That person is not, it's been explained what it is. It's a public relations thing. I'm sorry you don't like it, but.
Well, why are we the only city doing it?
I'm sorry?
Why are we the only city doing it?
I don't know that we are. I'm sure others in the country are doing it as well.
Not Murdock County, that's what the article stated.
I don't go around telling other cities what to do, sir.
Well.
I think your time is up, sir.
Thank you, thank you for your time, your honor. Have a pleasant evening, counsel.
Thank you.
Other comments, sir?
All right.
Sir, my, thank you. So number one, I guess I appreciate the question because I think it's going to give me a moment to brag on our fire department, and here's why. Is that at the end of it, our fire department is phenomenal. Like, they really are. They're phenomenal. They do a great job. When somebody is laid out on the floor and they are getting their chest pumped on because these guys came to the rescue, please make no mistake, that the additional things that we're trying to do take away from that core mission of what they are meant to do. Being said, additionally, I think one of the things that, I have a couple of daughters, and my daughters are, you know, nine and six and two, and one of the things that they've grown up knowing, just in their time, is that our law enforcement is really friendly because they have snow cones. That's their impression of law enforcement. They're there to help in saving the real people. And our police department goes out and they have a snow cone machine, and so the youth of our community learn not to be afraid of our law enforcement, but actually that the real people, and when they say, "Hey, you need to listen," that they'll listen. In the same way, my daughters have grown up in this town, and every single one of them has had one of our, like, fire department, like, our fire department that we give these children, these small hats. And while they get these firefighter hats that they love, they absolutely love, if my kids don't get three of them, one for each, it's going to be a fight. That one of the really coolest things is that while they're wearing their firefighter hat, they have a firefighter telling them about fire safety, wear their seatbelt, things like that. So as part of a certificate, I think my understanding is, as part of a certification course that's offered by a fire academy, is that this is another way to teach kids about how to do something. Now, if somebody wants to, and I'm not saying for yourself, I'm saying you heard somebody ripple in Titusville who could, really didn't care to follow up on it, I'm very disappointed in that, that they didn't take the time to figure out why it is. It's the same reasons why, as a teacher, sometimes as a kindergarten teacher, you don't go in with your regular suit on, you might go in with a little something different. I think that's the intent of it. I'm really proud of what they're trying to do for a fire department or anybody to connect the message. That's a really big deal to me. So if they found a way to do it effectively at a kid's level, because the moment a clown shows up, kid's going to pay attention, and they can talk about those things, I think it's awesome. I wish Mr. Phillips would have said something about that, but, you know, teacher.
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
My brother-in-law was, is a late first responder. He's no longer with us, so I know what all they do. And it's a question of priorities and image, as the previous speaker said. And the third, not every child, some children are afraid of clowns. You know, I asked Friday, I asked a person we know, "Did your daughter like clowns?" She doesn't like clowns. And it's about priorities. I mean, how much of this person's day is taken up being a clown? And this city has limited resources. And also, as a firefighter, you want respect. When you're employing a clown, is Titusville Fire Department really connotes respect? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I have a few.
Thank you.
Did you have one? I'm sorry.
I just, and I just wanted to say, I went riding with the fire department one day, and we went to an accident scene. The fire department was there in three minutes, and the ambulance, the EMTs, were there for Vard County in seven minutes. If I was having a heart attack, I would want our fire department there. They're amazing, and how fast they get there is just mind-blowing. So, you know, if I'm laid out with a heart attack, I just hope to God they're around.
Thank you, and that is very, very true. They're a great fire department. We should be very proud of them. And again, I agree with what you said. This is for public relations, and he and Mr. Phillips don't want to understand that point, obviously. Anyone else who'd like to speak on the petitions and requests? I see none. We'll go to next item, consent agenda.
Yes, sir, we have consent agenda items. I will read the items. We have one card, item D, and is there any items that counsel would like to be pulled before I read for the record?
I don't see any.
Okay, sir, with your permission, I'll go ahead and read items, all items except for item D. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the extension of leases with Mears Motor Leasing for 11 police vehicles through 31 October 2018, in the amount of $44,392, and authorize the city manager to execute lease documents. Consent agenda item 8B, approve single-stream recycling contract with WR Recycling of America LLC of Delaware to provide sorting and sales of recyclable materials from the City of Titusville, with an annual projected cost not to exceed $128,000, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8C, approve budget amendment, budget amendment transferring funds required to upgrade New World Software, and approve the contract amendment, subject to the resolution of terms by the city manager and city attorney, with Tyler Technologies in the amount of $126,510 to upgrade the police department's enterprise software, Tyler Technologies New World. In addition, authorize the mayor to execute the contract amendment. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the budget amendment recognizing the insurance proceeds from vehicle 8632 to rent vehicles undercover operations, and approve the rental agreements from Enterprise Leasing Company in the amount of $9,737 for said police department operations through 30 September 2018. In addition, authorize the city manager to execute the necessary rental agreements. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the donation of $250 from the Flag and Memorial Committee to the American Legion for support of Friends of the Cemetery, and authorize the city manager to put in place the instruments necessary for this donation. Consent agenda item 8G, approve budget amendment transferring funds to the project to cover the cost of improvements, and award the contract to Chrome Electric of Titusville, Florida, in the amount of $170,800 for the common parking lot lighting improvements. In addition, authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the award of contract subject to resolution of terms by the city manager and city attorney to Pace Analytical Services Incorporated of Ormond Beach, Florida, in the amount of $19,763 for sampling and testing services of the water distribution system as required by the environmental protection agencies UCM R4, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. And our one card is consent agenda item 8D.
Call a card, please.
Stan Johnson.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. This is a purchase of Sun Valley Lot 20, Block 78, and this is a well field that I'm not sure is being used right now. It's been resting for some time. And I guess I'm asking the question is, are we in some way, is the city in some way obligated to purchase this lot, or are they just doing it, "Well, we want to purchase it"? Or are they obligated, and if they're obligated, then the question is, is that, are we taking it? In other words, are we obligated because if we didn't buy it, then we could be sued because we're taking it in some other way, that they can't use it? So that's my question, is what is going on with Lot 20, Block 78? Why are we buying it, and what is the condition? Are we still in a resting mode with this well field? Are we pumping as it had planned to be? Because it's been resting for some time. It just didn't work very well. So that's my questions.
Is there anything else?
No, I'm waiting.
Please.
Counsel, we've been buying up properties in Sun Valley in the vicinity of the well field for many years. In fact, the former city attorney Dwight Severs had suggested when he left that we continue that program. There are many lots yet to be purchased. The purpose was to protect the well field and provide access to the well field for maintenance and other purposes. So we've identified lots in conjunction with the water department that they felt were important to secure for that purpose. So we have sent out letters over the years at counsel's direction to these property owners, asking whether they were willing to sell these properties. At no point were we obligated to do it, or are they obligated to sell. This is a purely voluntary effort on the city's part and on the property owner. So this is one property owner that contacted us, in fact, and stated that one of the owners had died, and they do not live in the state, and the survivor on the deed was not interested in keeping this property. So we asked them if they're willing to sell it at the appraised value, which is $800, and they said yes. And so that is before you to whether you want to accept this deed.
Thank you, sir. All the items have been read or spoken on. Could I have a motion to approve items A through, I just have it here?
Move to approve consent agenda, agenda.
H.
Item, items A through H.
H. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please? Vote.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Did I say yes? I'm not sure. I was reading. Yes. Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. This is the Comprehensive Plan Evaluation Appraisal Review, EAR, transmittal hearing. At least every seven years pursuant to Rule Chapter 7.3(c)(49) Florida Administrative Code, the city is required to determine whether the need exists to amend the comprehensive plan to reflect changes in statutory requirements since the last time the comprehensive plan was updated. The staff has determined that there are several changes necessary to bring the comprehensive plan into compliance with state requirements. City council directed staff to prepare an ear report. The deadline to submit the ear is 18 May 2018. Planning staff will present the ear-based amendments for all of the elements. After the state's review is complete, the amendment will be brought back to city council for final adoption, possibly in August of 2018. Additional changes may be proposed based on the state's review and input. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning agency, recommended approval of this action 7.0. We have Mr. Brad Parrish here with a presentation for council as part of the public hearing.
Mr. Parrish.
Sir.
Hello again.
This will be real short. I wasn't going to go through all of the elements with you, just really address the highlights, the main points of it. Last year, as you are aware, we were directed, or we told the state that we would go forward with an ear process, and that's an evaluation appraisal review. And then we generated a report evaluating the comprehensive plan to see if there are any changes that need to be made to be brought up into compliance with state laws that were adopted since the last time we did this. So after we did this the last time in 2010, a year later, the legislature made it really easy for local jurisdictions to go through this process. So we've taken advantage of that. We did not do the full-blown evaluation like we traditionally did, or other jurisdictions traditionally did prior to that 2011 amendment to the growth management laws. So right now, all we're trying to do is just address those policies that need to be changed to be consistent with state law. So it's a very minimalist type of review here. But it does include a lot of information here. I'll go through just a few slides, giving you some highlights, but just so you know, if you, the elements, all of the elements, chapters, you will, the comprehensive plan are included in your agenda, and the changes are identified with a strike-through underline in red. And some areas where we thought we probably need to explain some of the changes, we try to put a bubble or a comment there to kind of explain that. The main things that are really happening here have to do with the Peril of Flood Act, which we gave you a presentation on a few weeks ago. And then there are also included some references to a regional water management plan. That was something that was required by new state law. And also, some language related to the coastal high-hazard area. We've also, that particular policy was rolled into the peril of flood policies that we are proposing. So everything is primarily cleanup, but the main one is the peril of flood policies, which you saw prior. And I'll just point out the main change that we did since the last time you saw it. As was already mentioned, every seven years we're supposed to do this, and then address everything to make sure everything's consistent with any state laws. The comprehensive plan includes several elements or chapters. The most important ones that are probably going to be amended by this effort are the infrastructure element, the coastal management element, and the public schools facilities element. The, as you're already aware, the coastal management element is being changed dramatically because of the Peril of Flood Act that was approved in 2015. The public schools element, facilities element, we're proposing some major changes to that. Basically, we're moving a lot of redundant language that is no longer needed. Back in 2010, we approved a lot of language in there to direct the city to go into, come up with a school concurrency policy. And basically, what we did was, we went into an internal agreement with the Brevard School District with other jurisdictions of Brevard County. That was completed. And so we didn't see the need to continue having these policies inside this particular element. So it's a very reduced element. The infrastructure one has the new reference to the regional water management plan, which was created by the St. John's Water Management District. Again, the significant amendments have to do with the peril of flood policies, reference to the regional water management plan, updated language related to coastal high-hazard areas, and reference to a school interlocal agreement, which is currently in effect. The next task after this is, this public hearing is over, we would ask for your direction to go forward with approving this for transmittal to the state for their review. The state will have a certain amount of time to review this and provide comments. They did have an opportunity to, they gave us a courtesy review of at least the coastal management element, and they gave us some comments on that. So we tried to address that in the latest version that's before you today. I'm just going to point to you on one particular policy, just so you're aware, and that is Objective 2.1. And it has to do with, the state asked us to make sure we look at, they asked us to look at this in a more broad way, not just have policies that address just coastal management, coastal high-hazard areas, and then separate policies that deal with properties that would be impacted by sea level rise. They thought that we need to consolidate all of those issues into one objective. And so if these are adopted, we'll go forward with some programming and some land codes, and even look at our building code requirements to see how we can address redevelopment on properties that would be identified as in the coastal high-hazard area, also impacted by sea level rise and flooding. So these aren't separate issues. What they asked us is to look at this as one holistic issue. The LPA is the State Land Planning Agency. They will review it. That is the Department of Economic Opportunity. They'll send this out to several departments, including the Department of Transportation, Florida Department of the Environmental Protection, and others for review. Once we get that back, we'll see if they have any objections. We'll have to address those and bring this back to you for your acceptance of those changes. If we do not receive any objections to this, then we're just going to go ahead and take these policies and roll them into the project that you saw earlier by Kanan, and bring it all back to you as one larger amendment, possibly late August and early September. So with that, I'll try and answer any of your questions about this.
Counsel, anyone have any questions? Mr. Parrish? I see none. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
We have one card at Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I have one question about sea level rises, is that I expect we do have some sea level rise, and I guess what is the effect that we have now with the last, I don't know, whether it's 20, 25 years or whatever it is? What rise do we have in the Indian River is one question. And the second thing I have is this, it appears that in nowhere in this EAR is what was discussed in February at this council meeting. And the word was used by council members, the word was used as bankruptcy. And this EAR has to do with sustainability, and yet now this seems to be a new, new thing that's come up when we talked about the OPEB benefits, is that the city, city council members use the word bankruptcy, that we can be in a big trouble. So I don't understand why bankruptcy is not included in this EAR, because it certainly is a serious issue. I mean, not serious, real serious. So when the city is talking about bankruptcy, and yet we're now ignoring it, what's going on? So I'm asking Mr. Parrish to comment on what's going on with, and anybody to comment on what the heck's going on when we forget about it now, but we talked about it at many council meetings in November, January, and then in February. Thank you.
I can certainly answer that. The policies, as you are well aware, are being mandated by the state. So we had, but they didn't give us specific types of policies to adopt. They left it up to the jurisdiction to adopt them that are unique to our situation. We did do analysis using a model that was recommended to us by the state, that was developed by the University of Florida. So we came up with some preliminary analysis, but it's not enough detail for us to really do some action planning or strategic planning yet. The policies do ask the city to look into our existing facilities and identify what facilities, public facilities, might be impacted as a result of sea level rise and storm surge from hurricanes, and come up with some practical alternatives or solutions to that issue. So we don't have, right now, we're at the point of just really data collection at this point. And so if the state approves or accepts these policies, they'll come back to you, you'll approve them, and then we'll go forward with the programming that will be required in order to implement these policies. And that's when we'll get into the real details, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
And the bankruptcy?
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
I thought he was going to mention about the bankruptcy. He didn't say.
He's not part of the accounting side of government.
He seems like he should be. He's part of the city.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other cards, clerk?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? I see none. I'll ask for a motion on this item to transmit the evaluation appraisal review report with comprehensive plan amendments to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, State Land Planning Agency.
I will follow that. I will say that motion.
Okay.
Exactly what the mayor read, I will make that motion.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. City Attorney, I think you're up next.
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'm going to read the quasi-judicial procedures. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first. Those opposed will be heard second. Those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council staff, representatives, and such other representatives as authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, sign an oath card.
Yes, sir.
If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited any of the sites or spoken to any members of the public regarding an item to be reviewed?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I do have to add something. On the last one, it was four of the vote, because member Nelson was out of the room at the time, wasn't he?
I apologize.
No, that's quite all right. No, no problem.
My nose wouldn't quit itching.
Oh. No problem.
I should have borrowed a member Stokel's supplies down there.
Mayor, at this time, the next item for council is item 9B, which is Small Scale Amendment Number 1, 2018, with rezoning property located at 2586 and 2490 Dolphin Road. The small-scale amendment includes ordinance number 21, 2018, and ordinance number 22, 2018. And I'll read both ordinances at this time. Ordinance number 21, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 60, 1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by changing the land use designation on approximately 2.57 total acres of two properties located at 2486 and 2490 Dolphin Road, replacing the conservation and low-density residential future land use boundaries to the conservation and low-density residential future land use boundaries to match the boundaries of the surveyed wetlands and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 22, 2018, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, of the city of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by replacing the present open space and recreation OR and single-family medium-density R1B zoning boundaries to open space and recreation OR and single-family medium-density R1B zoning boundaries to match the boundaries of the surveyed wetlands on approximately 2.57 total acres of two properties located at 2486 and 2490 Dolphin Road and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended approval of this action 6.0. The applicant is requesting a small-scale amendment and rezoning in order to construct a single-family home on two lots which are intended to be unified into one lot. Based on the information from the Brevard County Appraisals Office, the total property area is approximately 2.57 acres. The amendment proposes to match the boundaries of the existing conservation and low-density residential future land use designation and the existing open space recreation OR zoning district and single-family medium-density R1B zoning district with that boundary between the wetlands and uplands as confirmed by the submitted wetland boundary survey. And staff's recommending that you conduct a public hearing of SSA 1-2018.
Right.
Saka is available.
I was just getting her eye. Do you have a presentation, ma'am, or you have a thing?
Brief. The staff recommends that this be approved. In 1993, when the wetlands were designated as required by state law, the staff used the best information available. And as individuals have come in over the years, they have done site-specific information, and in some cases, that site-specific information has shown the wetlands to be smaller, larger, but different than the map itself. And that is the intent here, is to make the map look like the wetland determination, which has been done on-site.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions to Ms. Saka from council? I'm not hearing any. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Would you call the card, please?
Mike Cunningham.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'm Mike Cunningham. I own CNC Construction Corporation here in Titusville. And I am working with Mr. and Mrs. Crouch regarding building their home on this piece of property. I think to make it real simple for the council, if you look in your package at the aerial survey of the land, mine is black and white, yours is color. It's extremely simple to see what's wet and what's dry. This portion in the middle of the lot is the high ground. It's a hammock. Everything outside of it is a wetland. Unfortunately, in the past, somebody made an error. Now, whether they did it from transcribing from one map to another, or maybe the maps back in that time weren't very good, maybe the aerial surveys are wrong. When you get into the wetlands, you can move a pencil and move a lot of feet on the ground. So the owner, based on the advice of several people that we work with, had a wetlands boundary survey created, which was then submitted to the city, that identifies without question where the wetlands are and where the uplands are. And we simply want to have the ability to build a single-family home on the center of the lot, on the high ground, where there are no wetlands. The impediment was the open space and recreational overlay, if you would, or rezoning. And that's the line that in the attached memo from myself to council states that I believe that the line was drawn in the wrong place, period. It should have never been drawn where it was to start with, because if you look at the aerial, which is not a wetland survey, the aerial clearly depicts what's wet and what's dry. Secondly, if you look at the way they drew the lines on those maps, they followed the borders of the lots, except when they got to these two lots. The other point that I wanted to make was very simply that this council, or the predecessors to this council, created Central Park Estates and created these two lots in 1988, and then basically in 1993, when they drew the OR line through the middle of them, rendered them useless. And this is a problem that you need to deal with. It's unique in a way that you had that presentation earlier. It's unique in a way that you had that presentation earlier in this meeting. This is not the first time this has happened in the planning process. It's not the first time for people trying to build, but from a perspective of builder, and I've been here for 40 years building, I've dealt with these ordinances, I created a lot of the ordinances on committees that I worked with. They trip people up, but people rely on one fact. If the council says, "This is Lot so-and-so of Central Park Estates," they rely on the fact that that's a buildable lot. But in this case, that's not what happened, because the overlay went on it later on and rendered it useful, useless, and you had to go through the myriad of the regulations. And quite frankly, a general person in the public doesn't understand that, and you need to make it simpler for them. We have so many rules, we can't keep up with them in this business. And that's just the development end of it.
In this country, sir.
In this country, sir, yes, I agree. This is a housekeeping thing, if I would. On your agenda, the address is incorrect in the title for one of the lots, 2486, not 2586. I don't know if it makes any difference, but that's a housekeeping chore. What we would ask is that, very simply, you approve the fact that the open space and recreation doesn't exist or changed what the boundaries are. And then, secondly, please consider the idea that my client is paying some $3,000 or $4,000 to correct what I believe is not an error that should have been made in the first place, and it was made by somewhere here in the city. They should have not put that line where it was, but he's having to pay the money to correct that through this process. And so, we're asking for some consideration to refund the fees that he's paid. And I'll get on my little dais for just a second, but if you take a homeowner right now, such as Mr. Crouch, he's got $5,000 or $6,000 invested into these processes of vacating a lot line and getting rid of an OR line. And then, when we build the house, he'll spend another $20,000 in impact fees and permit fees and everything else. So, here's $25,000 before I get to put the first stick in it. I've hated those fees for as long as I've been in this city and can't afford not to take the opportunity to tell you that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Not questions, Mr. Cunningham, but that second part's kind of hard for us to do. I mean, firstly, I don't know who did it, whether they did it right at the time. I mean, order changes shape of property depending on where it goes and how it goes there and so forth. But the real problem is, it's what's called a slippery slope.
I understand where the council sits. And it's a problem, because...
It is.
And I mean, you've known me, Walt, for forever.
Of course, and I have the highest regard for you, you know that, sir.
There's a high knob in the middle of it. It didn't change for the last 30, 40 years. There's low on both sides. But I do feel strongly that somebody drew the line wrong, and he's got to pay the bill for that. That is Mr. Crouch right there.
I met Mr. Crouch before, I believe.
And I can appreciate where you're coming from.
Yeah. As I said, I think it's fairly easy, I won't speak for council, but I think to get what you need done, done. To return that money, that's going to take a different type of action. And the problem is, we do it for one, then we got to do it for anybody in the future forever, if they say, come in and say, "Well, that group did this bad and did that bad." And it's going back so far, we can never tell why they did it or how they did it. You couldn't tell that.
No, no, I can just tell you that I feel in my heart that they were very wrong to do it.
Yes, sir, okay.
Because you took a lot that the council approved and then turned around and rendered it useless within five years. You know, what went wrong in that five years?
I could tell you, actually, but it's a long story.
Yes. I could probably tell you, too.
Yeah, I'm sure you could. The, so that's where, any questions of Mr. Cunningham? If not, you will be able to come back and do a rebuttal if somebody has some problem with this, so.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. You call the next card, please?
Mr. Crouch has a card in.
Oh, okay.
And then Stan Johnston.
Hello, Casey Crouch, 1400 Mayorville Drive. Obviously, the prop owner, so I'm speaking for this change. And I don't think I can add anything that Ms. Busaka or Mr. Cunningham already said, but I just wanted to be here to answer questions, if anyone had any.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Call the next card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points, Etta Avenue. For the benefit of Mr. Crouch and Mr. Cunningham, I spoke for this at the last council meeting. And I mentioned especially about OR zoning in 1993. And so, I'll just tell you a little bit about what I know about that, is that the lines that were drawn were very nebulous in many areas. And in this case, is that OR zoning was not, it was advertised on the newspaper, and, for example, from my family, we didn't know a thing about it until after it happened, after our property was rezoned. But over the course of a few years, our property went down from 400 units to zero units. And so, although we went to the city before we purchased the property and said that it wouldn't happen, we would not be re-administered or rezoned, it was in fact, indeed, that's exactly what happened. Now, interestingly, is that there was discussion behind the scenes, and at the last council meeting, there was something that city manager brought up that was prepared by Courtney Barker. And some of you remember Courtney Barker, she was in our planning department, and she's now mayor of Satellite Beach. Well, here's what I'm, people are telling me, is that when Courtney Barker was here in our, head of our planning department, she even said...
Sir, sir, that's hearsay, sir.
Fine, let me say it. Would you let me say it, please? And then, what you can do is you can call Courtney Barker and ask her, because if she goes to court...
Sir, calm down.
Okay, would you let me talk, please?
I will, but don't make accusations that are hearsay.
It's not a hearsay.
This is supposed to be factual information.
Oh, it's supposed to be factual. Well, here's what I'd like you to do. I'd like you to contact Courtney Barker and ask her, because if sometimes she goes to court, and we have, I have people who will say that what the city did, that this action of rezoning to OR zoning was illegal. So, that's what she says, and I believe that in court that she will say that, and you can say hearsay or whatever you want to, but this rezoning to OR zoning was a terrible thing the city did. People didn't know what was happening. I don't know if the people on this particular one knew what was happening, but it was a terrible thing that happened, should never have happened. And what Mr. Cunningham wrote, he says, "In addition to the map being incorrect, it is our position that the OR zoning that was placed on these lots rendered the lots unbuildable, which constitutes a taking." I completely agree with what he says, and maybe he'll be in the same situation that you won't listen to him anymore. But I think it's a very important thing that what happened in 1993 was a hush-and-rush operation by the city of Titusville to make sure that they preserved wetlands, or whatever they wanted to do, and that they went out of their way to identify properties that were actually usable and that had been used and are now no longer...
Time's up, sir.
Done. Thank you. Any questions?
I see none, thank you. If you wish to rebut anything, you may, sir. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion, or whatever your pleasure is. I think we can do all three of these in one motion, is that correct?
If you're inclined to have a motion to approve, it could be a motion to approve small-scale amendment number one, 2018, and to approve ordinance number 21, 2018, and ordinance number 22, 2018.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion from anyone? I see none. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, I'll read them. To approve SSA dash 2018, ordinance 21 dash 2018, and 22 dash 2018. I have a second.
Hi.
Hi.
Sarah.
Sarah, ladies go first. There you go. A motion in a second. Need a roll call vote, please?
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next items, please.
Yes, sir. The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as your local planning agency recommended approval of this action six zero. The applicant is requesting a small-scale amendment and rezoning in order to construct, whoop, I've got the wrong one here. I apologize. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action seven zero. The applicant's Bill Egness, Angela Wright of Positive Behavior Support Corporation, PBS Corp., on behalf of George McCarion of Parish Medical Center, are requesting a conditional use permit to establish a private school on 5.35 acres, partial located at 5650 South Washington Avenue in the Office Professional OP zoning district. The applicant is proposing to utilize one classroom within the existing building to establish a private school. No expansion of existing buildings are proposed with this request. The use will utilize the existing parking lot for ingress egress point for vehicular access to the property. Ms. Busaka's here to answer any questions that you may have on conditional use permit two dash 2018.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Busaka? I see none. Do you have any comments?
I would just like to draw your attention to the fact that the staff recommendation includes that the applicant shall submit a copy of their lease agreement detailing the hours of operation, or to provide a photometric plan of the existing site plan to show that it meets the lighting requirements, and then, in addition, that any modification to the existing site lighting will require submittal and approval by the city.
We'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards on this?
The applicant is here, Mr. Ogannas.
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, thank you guys for hearing me today. It's just a simple classroom that we currently have in the Parish Medical Center, the children's center of that, and we've been self-funding it now for about seven months. And we need to get it classified under the school umbrella in order to get funded from the Department of Education. So, there's absolutely no changes, the classroom is staying the same, the hours of operation is staying the same within the school, within the center, and we're just looking for the, be able to get the conditional use so we can get it approved with the Department of Education, so.
Yes, sir. Any questions of the applicant? I don't see any. Clerk, the next card, please.
We have no more cards.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion. I see no discussion. I'll accept the vote, I mean, a...
A motion?
Motion.
Move to, just getting late, move to approve the conditional use permit number two dash 2018 with the provisions that the applicant submitted, a copy of their lease agreement detailing the hours of operation of the school, and that they provide a photometric plan of the existing site lighting, and that any modifications to existing site lighting would require a submittal and approval of appropriate permits and exterior lighting plan. Works?
Thank you. Very, very good.
Mr. Vroom will be happy about that.
Do I have a second? Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, mid-year, is that, we have no ordinance first reading, old business, new business, mid-year, 2018 financial review?
Section 2087 of the city of Titusville Code requires the city manager to furnish an in-depth analysis of budget and financial condition of the city at midpoint of each fiscal year. Through the midpoint of fiscal year 2018, most revenues continue to track consistently with the budget. Current revenues from the state of Florida continue to trend lower than budget. All other significant revenues are tracking in accordance with historical records. Additionally, staff is seeking approval of the following mid-fiscal year budget amendments. The attached budget amendments appropriate FY 2018 funding for the department requests and adjusts the 2018 budgeted working capital to FYE 2017 results. Staff will continue to report on the city's financial condition on a semi-annual basis and will recommend measures as appropriate to ensure continued financial soundness of the city. And we have Mr. Tababate, Assistant City Manager, and Bridget Clements here to provide the presentation to council.
Do we, are you making a presentation?
Yes.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I mean, we don't have to, but I guess we should, right?
Too late.
Too late now, okay, let's go. Okay, so the first slide, if you want to go forward, Tom. We're having technical problems. Okay, this first slide just reiterates the vision and the mission of the city, which we show all the time. And then, the next slide just goes over the city ordinance. It just reiterates that we're supposed to furnish an in-depth budget review at the midpoint of each fiscal year, and that's what we're doing. And the city's policy is that each department manages to its bottom-line major department level, and we analyze that monthly in the finance department. And right now, all departments are managing to their bottom line. There are a few items that are within their bottom-line budgets that are not meeting the benchmarks that we project, but, and right now, the biggest one is the prior-year fund balance, and we'll get into that in a few moments when we go through the budget amendments. Fifty percent of the budget has lapsed as of the end of March 2018, and right now, everybody's in compliance at the highest level we measure the budget. So now, we go into the proposed budget amendments. The first, the next couple of slides, this one included, goes over the CAFRA adjustments. If you all recall, when we built the FY 18 budget, we budget a carryforward number and a prior-year appropriation account. What we're doing now is truing up those numbers to the 18 budget to what happened in fiscal year 17. And the only big story here is, if you look at the very top line, general fund, unassigned fund balance, when we were preparing the 18 budget, we thought we were going to have $316,000 more than we actually ended up with when the fiscal year 17 ended. And that was predominantly because of the hurricanes. We got slammed with hurricanes, and we were not able to record all of the dollars due from the federal government at September 30th. We have now gotten those dollars in, but it was a timing thing. But because of that, we have to adjust our budgets to allow for this shortfall. And the next slide just shows the balances in some of these other funds. You can see, if you'll look, you can see Water Resources has a big decrease. They still have about $10 million in working capital, but that, again, is tied to a lot of the hurricane-related and some other projects that occurred after we built the budget. But they have sufficient working capital, even with this adjustment. And then, the last of these are the internal service funds. The only fund that does not appear on here to have sufficient working capital is the loss fund, other activities, but as part of the budget amendment, we will move money from the reserve into that line item, so it'll be fine, it'll be whole by the time we're finished. This next set of slides are the department requests. So, this slide shows you how we are proposing to make up the $316,000 budget shortfall. We will do that by, we are proposing to do that by increasing code enforcement fee revenues. We added some extra money for code that we didn't plan on in the budget. And the rest of these items are savings realized from vacancies that have already been incurred. And then, we have an increase in expense credits for CDBG grants, and all that means is we're able to charge more than the grant to... And all that means is we're able to charge more than the grant, to the grants than we had planned. So that reduces some of our general fund costs. If all of these budget amendments are approved, we will have adjusted revenues and expenses to make up for the $316,000 shortfall. These next requests are some administrative things that we don't have control over in finance. Because the interest rates changed, we had a rate increase on the bond for the CRA. And so because of that, we're just having to increase the budget, and it's funded completely from the CRA. And that's what these two slides show. We don't control that. We have to do it. And then the next slide is all the requests from the water and sewer fund. They have been placing a lot of liens, and there's a cost to that. And so because we've been doing more of those, we need to increase the budget a little bit. And then the rest of these are some projects that the water department needs to increase some of these project costs in order to get their work done. And then finally, these are some minor adjustments to the healthcare funds. The first one has to do with the fully insured. We have made some changes in our insurance program and need to add a little bit into the employee assistance program. And we needed to adjust a little bit in the healthcare fund because we've all talked to you all about a plan redesign that we're looking for for the FY 19 budget. Well, that costs money, so we're asking for the money to pay for it through this. And then the last one is the loss fund reserve. We estimate those based on the historical trends of accidents and the claims. But claims are trending a little higher this year, so we're increasing the claims budget in the loss fund, but we have sufficient working capital to cover it. And then this slide shows some of the mid-year requests that affected our personnel and staffing. But these requests were all neutral funding-wise. And most of them, I believe, none, actually, none of them had any impacts on the FTEs. So it was net neutral from a personnel perspective and a cost perspective to the FY 18 budget. But we like to disclose it because you all approved the org charts as part of the budget.
And just to add to that, the only two times we bring adjustments to our workforce to councils during the budget processing at mid-year. And this year, there's no adjustments.
And in conclusion, our revenues are meeting target except for the prior year appropriation that we just talked about. And we've made adjustments to balance the budget based on that shortfall. We're managing well to our bottom-line expenses, and we continue to try to improve services through organizational realignments and other improvement initiatives. With the approval of these budget amendments, the 18 budget will remain balanced. And now we've, a couple of months ago, we started on the 19 budget. And so our objective, again, is to build a balanced budget that addresses our strategic plans and fully funds our operating needs to the best of our abilities. And here's a snapshot of the strategic goals and objectives I think you all approved
Wes, last meeting.
At the last meeting for 19. And then these are just a list of some of the management priorities that the city manager gave staff to focus on as we built the budget. And I think the biggest thing is a continued commitment to investing in employees and the work environment and staffing. We're still making, we still have to continue to address healthcare costs and a lot of the liabilities that we incurred in FY 7 in the prior fiscal year. So, and then again, there's still stress on infrastructure and a lot of the capital demands that we will incorporate into the budget as much as we can afford to. And then the priority still is to maintain our emergency stabilization reserve. And we continue to seek ways to enhance revenues because we know very well, and probably about a year or so, we might be hit with some more tax exemptions. So we need to prepare ourselves for that. And we continue to develop new ways of streamlining the way we work through lean six sigma, staff training, and process improvement. And we're encouraging planned and managed growth as a means of developing an attractive built environment while protecting and conserving our natural resources. So those are a lot of the priorities that we're given as we get ready for next year. So what next? These are the dates. We are still on track to present the budget to you all on July 10th. August 15th is the first budget workshop. And then the public hearings are scheduled for September 4th and September 13th. And that's it. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? I see no lights. Good job. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point State Avenue. Thank you for allowing me to address this. It looks good. It looks like we're in good shape, in good shape. This appears a little bit of a surprise in some ways because if you recall, in the February meeting is that we had Mayor Johnson declared one of that, something like called Proposition 13 or something like that, in which you can vote on something again, bring something back up. And then that, and that was, that, when that happened, there was a 27-minute discussion, which was not an agenda item, about OPEB and about bankruptcy of the city. Twenty-seven minutes, no agenda item. And I hope that Bridget is aware of that because I see nowhere in that, that was March, cleaning in March, nowhere about this possibility of the catastrophic collapse of our city with possible bankruptcy. That was the word that was used, bankruptcy. So I see it nowhere in this, which is, which is good, which is good. So I'm just wondering, was this a, sort of like a false alarm? Are we really in a situation where we're getting near bankruptcy, as was stated? Or are we better off than we thought we were? It sounds like, what Bridget's saying is it sounds like we're in better shape than what was presented at that 27-minute period of time that was not an agenda item. So I'm looking forward to some kind of comments about, because I see nothing in there about it, nothing at all. I'm looking at the presentation. So what happened? Did we all of a sudden get rich? Any questions? Anybody answers?
I have a comment, if that's okay. If you recall, when we were going through all of those discussions on OPEB, one of the comments we made was this was a liability that we would be dealing with in the 19 budget. That liability was referenced in the presentation we just made. This presentation is about the status of the fiscal year 2018 budget. It's not 2019 and beyond. We also mentioned in those conversations that it is our responsibility as city management to ensure that the city has a balanced budget, and our priority is to do, make the adjustments necessary to secure the financial stability of the city going forward. And I think that's what we intend to do as we go down this process.
Excellent. I hope that in 2019, we don't go bankrupt. Thank you.
Next item is petitions and requests. Wait, yeah, we got that. Do we need a motion on this? Accept it? Okay.
I'd like to make the motion, but if it's okay, I'd also like to congratulate Bridget on having a brilliant daughter. She was at the award ceremony last night. Had astronaut high school and got lots of scholarships and money. Yeah. Congratulations. I would move to, where am I? Move to accept the fiscal year 2018 mid-year financial review and approve the proposed budget amendments for the fiscal year's quarter ending March 31st, 2018.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Have a vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. Next item is petitions and requests from the public present. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at this point? I see no one. Mayor and counsel reports. You have my report written. Does any member of council have anything they would like to talk about?
Can I?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
I can.
So I actually made copies of the news article. I think I have enough from the Kissimmee paper. Someone down. So I was sort of excited about, week and a half ago, I got a call from Brian Camp, who is the gentleman who runs the Consortium for the Space Agencies. And we had been looking, trying to build some kind of vocational training for the kids in the north end of the county. And we'd sort of come up with an idea, and he called and he said, I want to come see you. And he said, I want to bring the mayor of Kissimmee and a lady named Alyssa Marsh. And then he called back and said, the mayor wants to see our mayor. So that was fine.
And we did.
They did that, and I met him afterward. This lady is a nonprofit group, and they set up aviation, technology, high schools, charter schools. They, according to her, and it sounds really good so far, according to her, she is the, one of the only schools that is allowed to operate within an airport. And right now, they have a school in Lakeland, the other one's in Fort Pierce, and Kissimmee is opening in the fall. She believes that this should be the next charter high school in Titusville. So I expect them to come back probably next week and look further. They did go over to the airport. They met with Michael Powell, and there is space for them over there. They believe that if this works, that they can have a charter high school up and running by September 2019. So we'll see. They won't have their own building, but they really want a hangar. And one of the things that the kids do is they learn to build an airplane. And the kids in Lakeland took that airplane and flew it to Minnesota. So it would be super cool.
I agree.
I love it. I love it. We've been invited over to visit them, and I'm sure we will go do that.
I just didn't want to interrupt you, so. We met with them, and it was really an exciting meeting.
What?
They didn't actually realize what we had to offer here in the way of space and so forth, businesses around that will provide jobs for the people that are coming out of that school. And it was a much better match for both of us than we either one expected. So myself and the city manager met with them, and it was a very, very fruitful meeting. They were then going to speak to you, from what we understood, and you were going to show them around. But, and they didn't realize the airport and all companies that are around the airport and so forth and so on. So it is exciting, and we're looking forward to talking further. I'm looking forward. You're looking forward. I'd say the city manager is. Are you over there?
He's over there working.
Exciting meeting.
Absolutely, sir, being an aviator for, since I was 15 years old.
He mentioned that once or 10 times.
Or 10 times in the meeting? It was, it was just, I was thrilled to death.
Yeah.
I was thrilled to death, and I, I've got my fingers crossed.
Exciting proposition, and they all seem to be very professional. I had met him before when Ruak came in. I don't know if you were there, Mr. Count.
Yeah.
And I couldn't place my, I said, you look very, so anyway, everybody looked, really had their, everything going, so that's great.
We talked to her about, what kind of programs can you have in there? She's very open to putting some technology programs in there to train people to go out to the Space Center and work. So everybody seems happy.
Yeah, and the best part is apparently they have their own funding, which we got very excited about. We weren't quite prepared for that, actually. But no, it was a wonderful meeting. Thank you. Anything else you wanted to add?
I'm just excited.
Vice Mayor?
I just had a question. Just, skills for our kids are awesome. Is there any chance you may have a desire to reach out to Ms. Archer over at Brevard Public Schools?
I don't mind doing it.
Yeah.
When I talked to Alyssa, this was her point. They're getting a lot of things from private enterprise to run their school. And, you know, we talked about it, and we said, you know, what's the difference between public school doing it and these people doing it? These people had an airline, airplane donated to them from Spirit Airlines. And with the idea, it was broken, obviously, so that the kids could come in and work on it. And in talking about, to her, she goes, you know, that airplane was $5 million. And our program setting it up is a lot of money, but we're getting funding from the private sector along with the state. And she said, it's just very hard for the public school to compete with us. Their program is set up, so basically, they would go in a classroom, they, they learn a certain lesson, and then they go into the hangar or into whatever classroom, lab, so to speak, and work on that problem.
I guess where, and the dynamic is, I don't know the dynamic, but I think of two, and remember, Diesel might be able to clean me up on this.
Okay.
Is that, I think, I'm not sure, is that if it's a private school, it's a private school, and it solely rests with the state of Florida, and they figure that out. Whereas if it's a charter school, that charter has to be acknowledged by Brevard County School District.
Correct.
And because of that, that process with, with the, I think, previous experiences with the charter schools in Brevard County, some have been very good, some have been not as good, that I would think that the school district would be very interested in, if there is an avenue of a program to this scope, even if it's not a public, public charter, that they would possibly be interested in how may that implement with the rest of the development plans for North Brevard. As an example, if this is a private entity and they're going to come in, that's, got it. Eventually, the paperwork's going to hit the desk.
Right.
But before that paperwork hits the desk, that may be some time. And if it's some time, the plans that are currently being implemented by Brevard County School may not be inclusive of that. And there may be duplication of effort, money expenditure, or just something they don't know about.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a private business, so whatever, however they handle that is up to them, but.
I would not have any problem talking to her.
Yeah.
And I think as we get further along in this, it'd be worth it, worth it to talk to her. This will be the fourth or fifth school that they built. So we're just.
The mayor of Kissimmee came all the way over to tell us how good his experience was with them. So we, you know, we looked at it all different kind of ways. And I'm not saying that you're not right. All I'm saying is that we got very good feelings about him because he was so excited over, he came with him over here to tell us.
Mayor, could I have you lean towards the microphone a little bit? We're not able to pick you up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way back here sleeping. I'll just give you a synopsis for the public listening. The mayor Kissimmee came over, and he's so excited about the project they have done over there and working with these people. He's been doing it for a while, that he came over here to basically vouch for them and tell us what his experience was. So we have what appears to be a very, very good situation there. Not to say the school board may or may not get as long. They don't apparently need them, though, which is pretty interesting.
But you're right, that it would be good to sit down and talk to them and let them know
Sure.
what these people are thinking so that they're not spinning. Yeah, they're not surprised, they're not spinning their wheels trying to develop that same kind of program.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I would just add to that, dealing with some charter discussions lately myself, that... that if they are private, they pretty much have a, a more free rein. But if they are charter, Ms. Archer would definitely have to get in there and see the curriculum, et cetera. It sounds fantastic. There's, there's nothing negative to say about it. You just have to make sure the curriculum, you know, if you're going in there and working aeronautics, is the district going to ask that there's more to that? And I don't know that there is or isn't. I don't really know a thing about it. So I just think that getting there is a good idea. And to, this kind of, sort of, what I want to say too, I was going to say it earlier when we had our Jim Phillips guy, who came in as a fan of Jim Phillips. I had this planned before that, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Titusville Police came to Titusville High School and showed off the dogs that they have, and I made sure I got out there. They started off with the ROTC people, and then it was any class that wanted to come out. Totally amazing. And I'll leave it at that without getting into remarks that don't need to be made, because then I will also add that I was, again, this really wasn't designed for this guy to be here, but I, I think it's so super that our, our fire department goes out and goes to elementary schools, and I was reading recently that they're at Imperial States Elementary School, showing off all their stuff, and then they played and lost in a close one and kickballed to the Imperial States kids. I don't know that Jim Phillips would think that was a good idea. I thought it was a great idea.
I guess that's everybody. City managers report?
We have one card.
One card from the mayor's report.
Oh, we have a card? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Thank you. City manager.
Yes, sir, I've got a couple action items. In, in front of you is a memorandum of, of understanding with the school board of Brevard County. And this is reference to the school resource officers. This is the agreement that will set forth the nine officers that the city's committed to providing in our schools, which will staff all of our public schools. If you read through the funding, reimbursement, Brevard County will provide fifty-two percent of the officer's salary and benefits, and the city will pay for forty-eight percent of it. We're also required to provide all the equipment, and as you look through the MOU, there are certain requirements that the SRO must do. So this is a time sensitive. We just got the document yesterday. So what I'm asking counsel to authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum, I've got two ready for you to go, mayor, and we'll get it down to the school board as soon as we can to, to, again, show our commitment to continue to source and resource our school resource officers.
City attorney, do you want to?
Yes, mayor, as this was an agenda add-on, I would open it up that if there's any member of the public that, this is an action item, so if there's a member of the public that wants to speak on this item, I would open that up.
Okay. We can do that right now. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? I see no one. So we need a, an approval for me to sign the MOU. Oh, is another, Member Stokoe.
I wanted to get a clarification. You said that the cost is being split between the county and us?
The, the school board, yes, ma'am.
Between the, okay, so the school board and us, so the, not the county of our county?
That's correct. It is the school board.
Okay.
Any other, let's just, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm comfortable with the MOU as written, but I, I do for counsel have, I think pause for some caution. So I believe that our city has taken steps previously ahead of any catalyst of a significant incident of staffing law enforcement officers, SROs, in our schools. We're ahead of the game on that. We're substantially ahead of other cities. Next year, we're there with a SRO in every campus in Titusville. So where other campuses are trying to find thirteen next year, that ain't going to happen. So I feel good about that. I think that the school board is going to be okay with the numbers that they put forth and their commitment this year for this. And I'm also understanding of the state legislature's intent in funding the school board's initiative. But their funding is only currently, I think, a year long, as written. So what I'm very concerned about is that our state legislature is going to say, hey, this is a good idea, fund it for a year. Everybody goes out and gets hired. We get people in, every city does it, and then next year, they, we have a mandate that's not funded, which then the school district won't find money. By the way, the money that this is coming out of is the same thing for education already. So this isn't in conjunction with, this actually takes the money away. It just used it in a different way, which we're already strapped on that. So my concern being is that in the long term, in conjunction with this MOU, it's a good first step, and I think appropriate. I would definitely like to revisit what the district's plan is in funding for future years, five years out. So what is your commitment for a five-year funding source, not just a one-year, irrelevant of state funding? So that would be a question that I have. Thank you.
Thank you for, for that information. We certainly will check into that. But at this point, no matter what may happen in the future, it's what's happening now and what alternative, in my opinion anyway, do we have? I wouldn't want any of our, I wouldn't want any children hurt in our community or in our county. But, so, yes, we are ahead and were ahead, and I think that's something to be very proud of. Anyone else have anything there? We need a motion. Did we have a motion for the MOU?
I move to approve mayor signed the MOU.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
My motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. The second action item on my report is, we have a letter of support prepared for the mayor's signature that will go to the Economic Development Administration, and this is for a grant. The city's supporting the grant to help with the causeway across on 405 to Kennedy Space Center. Y'all know that's a vital bridge that has probably outlived its lifespan, and the equipment that they're proposing to carry over that bridge in the future and the, the frequency that heavy equipment will be going over the bridge, the bridge needs to be fixed and repaired. So this is a letter of support. Several other communities have also provided letters of support, so we're requesting that counsel authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter of support.
Counsel, can I have a motion on that?
Move to approve the mayor signed the letter of support.
That's good.
Take a nap.
I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give Dan that one. Any further discussion or questions? I see none. All, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign, passes unanimously.
Second, in my report, I've included two resolutions from the city of Rockledge, which they were kind to share with us, resolutions 2018-805, 2018-806. These are resolutions going to the State Constitution Revision Commission, and they are, as you've read, involving plastic bags, single-use plastic bags, which the state currently preempts municipalities for taking any action on those.
Use them, but I just think there might, might be something better. So I would like to see us adopt these resolutions, especially the second one.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, anybody like to make a motion?
I thought, Sarah, you're doing it?
No, I did have a comment. I, I think I'm in agreement with the plastic bags one, moving toward, as the mayor mentioned, the home rule I'm very much for. The voter, or the elections one and the voters one, I'm briefly, I, I did not look at it in depth. I'm not sure if I'm completely on board with everything as written. I would like to look at that one a little bit more. And then I did have a question. Is Rockledge the only one adopting these within our county? Are there other cities, do you know, that are looking into these as well?
We, we surveyed, Satellite Beach has currently a, a resolution on, on plastic bags, and they tried to become a prototype city to, to try to test out things.
Right.
We surveyed, others are working on resolutions, but these are the only two that we could find that were complete.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't know how, as written, with the elections one just yet. I don't know if anybody had any comments on it as well.
Anybody have any comments or feel confident or not?
Well, I don't have any problems waiting on the first resolution. I would like to go ahead with the second resolution.
Okay.
Is the other one time sensitive?
Not really, sir. But the constitutional, the sooner we can get it to the revision committee, the better. If it's a resolution of support.
Can we wait for the next meeting?
Yes, sir, we could bring.
Both could.
Mayor, I would suggest that since these are not city resolutions on your agenda for approval, the proper motion, if you're interested, would be directing staff to come back with similar ordinance.
Correct. These are just samples of, a couple.
I'd be okay with that, especially for time sensitivity issues.
How about, so we do that?
Yep. That's fine with me.
So we could direct city staff to come back?
Correct. With one or both resolutions for your consideration at the next meeting.
Okay.
That works for time.
Sure. And to your point, ma'am, if, if you would like for us to go ahead and prepare that first one.
Mm-hmm.
We'll do both, and then you guys can discuss and debate those two.
Yeah, that'll give me a little bit of time. I'd like to ask around just from other colleagues.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that part of the motion?
That can be, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the motion. Okay, do I have a second?
Well, so.
Well, do we have a second?
We need a, it's a direction, so do we need a, any motion?
Need a motion?
Sure, the motion can be to provide that direction to bring those resolutions back for your consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Just one comment, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And this is in Member Stokoe for your research purposes. One of the things I would suggest possibly looking at is how did, why did we get to closed primary, or why did we get to closed primaries? Why there are certain sections of the United States that only use closed primaries? What was the function of a closed primary? And historical reference of how we got there?
Mm-hmm.
And it, just for a balanced view of it.
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. That's in there, Lynn, right? Okay. All right. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. I hear nothing, so it's unanimous, and.
Yes, sir. And the final for my report is a couple information items, the budget workshops that are coming up, and a reminder to counsel that you are in recess in the month of January, or June, I'm sorry, where you have one meeting, the second meeting in June is canceled. Subject to your questions, it completes my report, and there is one card on my, my item.
There is one card, is that what you said?
That's correct, sir.
Do you want to call a card, please?
Stan Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. With that, I think we have completed our mission this evening. I will call the meeting adjourned.